Mr. Chairman, we should be ready to start now.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Sparta Township Virtual Planning Board Meeting. For the record, today is Wednesday, November 4, 2020. It is 6:00 PM and the Sparta Planning Board is now in session. This is a special meeting held remotely via audio and video conference. It is open to the public and is in conformance with New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been provided to the public and the press 10 days prior to this meeting via the New Jersey Herald and our Sparta Township website at www.spartaneug jersey.org. You may access this meeting by emailing sparta.zoom@spartaneug jersey.org to receive required password, audio conference phone number, and meeting ID. You may access the agenda and all the application documents for tonight's meeting online via the planning board link at www.spartaneug jersey.org. Do we have anybody from the public, any indication that we have anybody from the public online at this point?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Board Secretary, please call the roll.
Dr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Gall?
Here.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mr. Raina?
Here.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Sylvester?
Here.
Chairman Cezak?
Here. Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite you all to join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice.
Hey.
The next item on the agenda is approval of approval of minutes from our October 7, 2020 Board Meeting. Does anybody propose any changes to the minutes? Okay, if there is no one, would anybody from the Board care to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
This is Dr. Parker. I'll make that motion.
This is Mayor Murphy. I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Raina?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes. Hello?
Yes.
Chairman Cezak?
Yes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of memorializing resolutions. We have two resolutions to approve this evening. The first one is the application number 684 from our October 7, 2020 meeting. And the second is the standardization, the standardized protocols for a remote public hearing like we have tonight. So I'm going to read the title of the first resolution. I make a motion that we approve Memorializing Resolution of the Township of Sparta. Approving the preliminary and final site plan, see variances and site plan exceptions or waivers, application of JAM Properties Limited Liability Company relating to Block 16001, Lot 14, and located in the Economic Development Zone District as decided October 7, 2020. Do we have a second, please?
This is Dr. Parker. I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Raina?
Yeah.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Cezak?
Yes. Thank you. Now, the next one, the next application, I'm sorry, the next resolution. I don't believe that we have seen before, and I wonder if it would be instructive, Tom, Mr. Collins, for you to just do a quick review in terms of the content of this resolution.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. The reason that you're, I'm recommending that you do this resolution and attached protocols is that the Department of Community Affairs adopted a emergency regulation that requires a resolution like this and establishes certain procedures they would like governing bodies and boards and public bodies, not just planning boards, to follow when they hold meetings remotely. We already we already concluded that you had the authority without this regulation pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act and the procedures you were following. That's why you did remote meetings and I think starting in June, at least, maybe in May. And all this does is it makes clear that the DCA also recommends it, and because they did it as an emergency, technically, it's in effect already. And then this has been fine tuned a little bit to reflect how Sparta would do, Sparta Planning Board would do remote meetings like you have been doing. The little nuances that are a little different are that the DCA basically said if you're gonna have, let's call it a hybrid meeting where the majority of the Board is in the meeting room or in a meeting room, then you shall try to have it at a place big enough for whatever number of the public might possibly attend. So it sort of makes it hard to do hybrid meetings where majority of the Board, where the Board is in a meeting room, but the public is remote. We didn't, we weren't really doing that. Sometimes were. We don't, I don't think we have a problem at all with what we did, and I don't think we will have a problem in the future. But it's another reason why it probably makes sense to assume that during the COVID emergency, unless absolutely necessary, we will probably be wise to just keeping our meetings the way we've been doing them by remote meeting and remote public hearing, and we'll deal with each case on a case-by-case basis if there's some objection to that. But it's working. DCA agrees with it, and this would basically, like the Mayor Chairman said, clearly state what the standards are for doing it. So with that being said, I just recommend that you, someone make a motion to prove it and second it, and roll call to prove it, hopefully.
Yeah, this is Mayor Murphy.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Jerry.
I just like proposing a motion to adopt in a memorializing resolution of the Township of Sparta, establishing standard protocols for remote public meetings held during a governor-led emergency.
This is Dr. Parker.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Gall? Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Raina?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Paul has joined the Board.
Mr. Murphy, any comments?
Just one for Tom. I noticed that this was put up for adoption and published in the New Jersey Register. Isn't there a 60-day waiting period for that to come into full effect or public hearing period?
Normally, there would be, Jerry, but they did it by what's called an emergency rulemaking. And so what that means is that it became effective upon the adoption, but with still a comment period that I believe expired in October. So I think October 19th or something like that, but anyway, they became, because they were emergency, which is fairly rare, they became effective immediately with public notice and public comment to still take place after they became, after they were adopted and published. I'm not aware of what, whether significant comments were submitted, but if they were, I wouldn't be surprised because there's some, there are some odd provisions. But if they were, then the DCA would still have the ability to review those comments and come and respond to the comments and perhaps make amendments to the emergency rules. So for now, these are technically a law, administrative law of the New Jersey DCA, fairly rare occurrence.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, any further questions by anybody? Okay, if not, then we're gonna move on to tonight's public hearing, which is going to be a work session for the Board. The public portion of our hearing tonight will review two proposed draft ordinances. The first is for rail-dependent uses in the Economic Development and Planned Resource Development Management 1 District. And the second is to allow construction of eco-dwelling units in parts of township. Lastly, we will do a quick stat review of the remaining work items that were, that we were discussing this spring for our master plan review. So with that introduction, what I would like to do then is call upon our Township Engineer, Mr. Push, to please acquaint us with some of the changes that, or updates, or amendments, if you will, that have been carried out on the proposed ordinance for rail-dependent uses in the EDM PDRM zones. Stanley, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So just to provide some context, because it's been some time since we last met, and you've had a lot of matters in front of you. So just to focus on what we've got, we are addressing an item that has been in your master plan reexamination report for many cycles of reexamination, more specifically, recognizing in the economic development and related area where rail service exists to look at the master plan and the ordinances of the township and ensure that our land use ordinances are not an impediment to developers utilizing the rail, which is an essential resource. Again, to the extent that we can encourage utilization of rail, there's that much less material being transported by road. It is also an economic resource that Sparta Township has that other townships do not have. We know that there, that there is rail usage over the Economic Development Zone in the general vicinity of Limecrest and Demarest. There are several rail operations that are in place at this point. Those have been there for a long time. It involves bulk movement of materials, materials arriving by rail and bulk being transferred to track the trailer carriers and being delivered. If, just to point out an example, it's my understanding that M&amp;M Mars gets a lot of their sugar and sweeteners through that particular location being delivered to them. I always find that interesting, that a lot of the candy we buy actually found its way coming through Sparta. But your master plan essentially looked at the rails. Number one, we want to make sure that we're not creating an impediment, but two, should there be improvements to our ordinances to encourage the use of that rail in an appropriate way? So Tom and I worked together and we looked at your existing ordinance for both the Economic Development Zone as well as the PDRM 1 Zone, which are the areas where you have properties that front on existing rail siding. We looked at the ways in which we could make those modifications, and over the last three meetings or so, we went through some of those changes. At our last meeting, there were, in my mind, two or three issues that remained relatively outstanding. Just from a housekeeping standpoint, there was some discussion about solar. And solar was in the prior draft as a principal permitted use. And it was listed as a solar farm, and there was some discussion about that. You know, might this ordinance be used in a manner that was unintended? Because it's not our goal to take economic development properties and simply make solar farms out of them. However, we did recognize with such expansive roof areas, that is certainly an appropriate place to provide solar on the roofs of these structures. And I think Tom pointed out that that's, and Tom, if I'm saying this incorrect, please correct me, but that's an inherently beneficial use that will come along with the applications. It does not need to be a principal use. So that was pointed out. There was a bit of discussion last time regarding that. So that's a change you see. Another significant change is the fact that we discussed the proximity of the proposed development to the rail siding. What is an appropriate distance? And I need my glasses to refer to Section F on page three. I'm using the Redline version on page three. We had had an offset distance of 1,500 feet, 1,500 feet offset from the rail line. And we were concerned that that might be more than is necessary to achieve our goal. We're really talking about warehouses that are adjacent to the rail line. So we looked into that a bit further. Tom and I discussed it. I reached out to several warehouse builders to get a feel for when these warehouses are developed adjacent to rail line, what is a dimension that would work? And we were able to ratchet that down to 500 feet. It serves the objective, because that was a concern. Is this going to enable the rail-type warehousing much more significantly away from the rail? So I think that certainly addresses one of your concerns there. There were a few other slightly, you know, minor modifications that, you know, the change of use, the structure, et cetera. I'm not sure that really needs much, much discussion in that regard. So those are the changes in the ordinance itself. I also want to, what I want to do is, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I can share my screen with the Board, because I do have the figure that I presented last meeting, and I modified that. That was another question, if that's acceptable, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please proceed. Yeah.
So I will bring it up here. Do you see the figure on your, on your screen?
Yes.
Okay. This is similar to, but different than what you saw at our last meeting. At our last meeting, let me first define it. The green lines are rail. And there are two rails, and to give you a general sense of location, if you could see my arrow, I'm traveling along Route 15 here. And then traversing this here is Houses Corners Limecrest Road, just to give you a general orientation. This is our tax map, and unfortunately, the tax map doesn't have the labels of the roads, and I thought with all the labels, it might be cumbersome. So just to orient yourself. Now, last time I presented this, I provided an offset line of 1,500 feet on each side of the rail, and we just simply captured all the properties within it. And after some discussion, I realized that that was misleading, because not every property within the offset distance qualifies. So what we talked about was, what you asked me to do is, can you zero in on this and look at properties that exist today that are of sufficient size, that are within this 500-foot offset criteria, and that are available for development? So for example, if a site is wet, you know, fully saturated wetlands, whatnot, it's not developable. Let's not get into that. You know, if a site is not large enough, but maybe at some point in time, somebody might be able to cobble together, you know, is that in the realm of reality? We want to know what's in the realm of reality today? What sites are in play? So the pink sites that you see are sites, and I'm just gonna jump to another figure quickly. This is, this is the same basic orientation. I'm using the same coloring as the zoning map. So this pink area, without any shading, is your Economic Development Zone. And the pink with the hatch mark is your PRDM, PDRM 1 Zone. So those are the two zones that we apply to. So from within this zone, which properties qualify? That brings us back to this map. So we looked at properties that were immediately adjacent to the rail, existing rail. We looked at properties that were 80,000 square feet or larger. And we ended up with these properties. So to orient yourself, if you're traveling north on Route 15, and you make a right on Houses Corners Road, you've got what I call the corner property. You've got the Michelotti tract, which has just recently been sold, and I would expect that at some point in the near future, it'd be coming before you. I shouldn't say sold, it was purchased. You've got the Grinnell property, what I refer to as the Grinnell property, the former Grinnell property. You've got a front piece and you've got a rear piece. But that rear piece clearly is adjacent to the rail siding with the Murph plant and what have you. If you look across the rail on Aaron Drive, that's what I'm pointing to now on Aaron Drive, the property at the end of the cul-de-sac qualifies. And I should point out that there is actually a provision in the deed for that property that addresses the establishment of a spur, and that's why this is that way. The property was actually configured to accommodate a real spur along that line. In a similar way, if I drive up Route 15 and I make a left on Limecrest, I should be making the left on Limecrest here, I should say. I make a right on Demarest, the property where Sparta Sand and Gravel currently exists has rail frontage and rail spurs already existing. The property diagonally across, which is currently owned or was owned by Eastern Propane, that you approved the subdivision some time ago, that property has rail frontage. We did not include the properties in the middle because they are already rail, being utilized for the current purpose. They're already in play. Further to the south, as you go down Limecrest Road, there are a few properties to your right which has frontage. And now we're getting down into the area where the quarry is currently operating. I'll call this, this is across the street from the quarry on the northern end. There are some properties which are accessible to the rail, but they cross over into Lafayette. And they do have road access from Lafayette. I don't remember the name of this intersected road, but there is frontage. And again, if I come back down on Limecrest Road in the general vicinity of the Wilson property, that's what this is, you've got a property across the street which does have rail access, and it does have frontage on Limecrest Road itself. So there are a few properties that could potentially qualify. From a market standpoint, it is unlikely that all of these properties would ever move in that overall direction, because you've got, you've got other uses that are appropriate. But in theory, they could, they could adapt themselves to perform different types of rail uses or rail-dependent uses, as it were. And the one that comes to mind, the one that is being discussed, the one that is desired by at least several of these property owners, is the potential to do warehousing, bringing materials in and out by rail, pick and pack or unload, repackage, put it back on rail, or as is done in the center of this triangle right now for bulk materials, like the sugar products for M&amp;M Mars, bringing material in by rail bulk, transferring them ultimately to an on-the-road carrier, and then shipping them in that manner. So before I get off of this map, because I know we spent some time discussing, we can go forward with some other. Does this help zero in, or do you have additional questions or comments regarding this?
How about the quarry property?
The quarry, can you see my pointer? The quarry is up in this direction here.
Yes.
So the quarry is not, the quarry does not have rail frontage. The quarry is across the street from the rail. This road that you see that's curving, that's Limecrest Road.
Yeah.
The quarry is to your left of that road. The properties to the right of the road, in terms of our view here, those are the ones that front on the rail. The rail being, we superimposed the green line on the rail to make it more evident. So the quarry itself does not qualify. But across the street from the quarry are two tracts which do qualify.
Stan?
Yes.
The township owns about 2/3 of the quarry. And you know, down the road, who knows when, if the township decides to sell it rather than keep it as recreational property, would that then become eligible?
No. It's my understanding that the properties to which you were referring to are across the street. So on the, using the north arrows, you see top left, on the south side of Limecrest Road, not on the north side, and only the properties on the north side, only the properties on the north side are adjacent to the rail siding. And according to the draft of the ordinance, the property must be adjacent to the rail siding, number one. And number two, the proposed operation must be within 500 feet of the rail siding or the spur itself. And then the other criteria is the size of the property must be significant enough, 80,000 square feet, to support this type of operation.
Okay, well, the township owns 32 acres.
But I believe, Mayor, I believe the property that the town owns is on the south side of Limecrest Road, unless I'm mistaken.
You're correct.
Okay.
But there's also an old rail siding coming out of the quarry itself that connects past Randazzo Road, which is that little old road that you said you forgot the name of.
Yes.
But again, I don't know if that's, now we're into either Andover Township or Lafayette. So I'm just trying to look down the road to see if, in fact, any of that property could, does have the potential.
And, you know, Tom, maybe you can help me with that. I'm now familiar with the spur, or I should say the rail siding you referred to, but I don't believe that rail siding is within a railroad right of way at this point in time. Is within a railroad right of way at this point in time.
Yeah, I don't know either way. I do know. The evidence of where the crossing of Limecrest Road was. Is still visible in the field. And. I think Jerry's right that it was once a siding. From the, from the quarry lot to the other side of this, you know, to the rail. And actually, under the ordinance, Stan, I would imagine that someone could build a rail siding. If they can get all the approvals for it. It's a little hard to cross a road now. With a new rail siding, I think it might be impossible. But sometimes these things have legacy rights. That still exist in old deeds. So I'm not saying it would happen, but. Theoretically, under this ordinance, you know, the quarry could build a siding. And could build and then say that it, you know, work it out with the railroad. Then say that it meets the ordinance and then say that they'd like to be a warehouse. And I don't think that's a bad thing because frankly, on their site is a building that's probably eighty to a hundred feet tall. ought to be torn down, but it's, uh, it's, uh, it's a nice, but it's a high, a very high one, probably from Thomas Edison. Historical, right? Definitely a pre-existing non-conforming, probably pre, prior to any zoning, non-conforming use. It used to have trees growing on top of it, but they seem to have been cut down.
Hey, rooftop garden.
One, one other question. According to what we, I've looked at out there, across the street from the quarry. Across Limecrest Road, there are piles and piles of, of product laying there. There's a quarry own that? So that would go right where the, the, the property that pink property is.
So, so yeah, so the, the, the quarry proper continues into Lafayette.
And Andover.
And, and yes, this is your tax map, so it truncates at the town line. And obviously, we're not addressing zoning outside of our, our area. So. There, there are stockpiled materials, definitely across the street in, in the other town. What I can tell you is that the, that there's an asphalt plant across the street. In another town, not in Sparta. I don't know the answer. What I could tell you is there are two lots and I'm trying to, I'm trying to visualize. I can't remember. Uh, if I did a Google map, I'd be able to look at what's here right now. I don't know if they've stockpiled on these two lots. This larger lot down below. What I can tell you right now, it is currently an open field. It's maintained for, um, for hay. It gets cut twice a year. On this lower lot here, I just can't remember on the, on this. Two corners of Randazzo, uh, if I'm saying that right, Mayor. Uh, what, what is actually developed on that? I know further. East or further up Limecrest, you're absolutely correct. There are stockpiles. Uh, I know they're definitely in Lafayette. I don't know if they're stockpiled in Andover.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what township they were in, but I knew that they, I was assuming since it looked like product there. That it belonged to the quarry or they had some kind of an arrangement. But that is in either Lafayette or, or Andover.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think that property there is partially wetlands because there's a stream that runs along the railroad, I believe.
You may very, you know what, you may very.
That's a part of the Paul and Skill River right there.
And, and to that end. And to that end, even though I show these in pink. To the extent that there are environmental, uh, impediments to development. While it may qualify from a bulk standpoint, it may not be developable and that's a very, very good point.
Yeah, I think the, Stan, I think the, the river or, you know, the beginning of the river. Goes under Randazzo Road near the railroad crossing. And so both sides of the Randazzo Road are very wet. Actually inundated to some extent.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So that probably, that area a little bit, it would be less than that, but.
But that's the headwaters to the Paul and Skill. So that being the case, these properties. Uh, you know, if I factor in those environmental restrictions, should probably be neutralized out.
But I think what the board can see, everybody, I think what you can see from this is that. If we just focus on the land in the ED zone and the PDRM one zone. That are both very similar, that might be useful to a rail dependent use that we've now defined. Would basically be limited to those areas. And. That helps you know that. That that's, if you were trying to promote that type of warehouse. It would likely be that you would be promoting it by this ordinance with these reduced. With these different standards for this type of. Warehouse structure or rail dependent structure would basically be on those lots within five hundred feet. Of the right of way. Or the, or the rail spur. So. It helps you focus your attention. It also makes an awful lot of sense. We've been saying for decades, let's. Have Sparta take advantage of the rail. Uh, New York Western and Susquehanna rail line, it's primarily freight. There what, so it's, it's just, it just makes sense. It's a resource that is existing in the township. And the land near it is useful.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, any more questions on this exhibit or should I, should I move forward? Uh, your mic is off, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Stan, while we're waiting for him, could you go back to page three on the redlined copy? Uh, at the very bottom, you've got lot area ratio. Is that? Sub, is that paragraph seven? Because it skips then to eight. You've got it redlined out, but I'm wondering whether that was.
And yeah, I mean, that's, that is a formatting, uh, and I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a note of that. Uh, but we'll make sure that we don't lose that. Uh, it looks like that was a reference to some formatting that was done to the paragraph. But I don't, I don't think the seven should have been crossed out. Good point.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's, that's your, your whatever.
Will do, will do.
Thank you.
And the only, the only question I had was in addition to. In addition to item F one, you, you, you mentioned the. The, uh, any structure has to be within five hundred feet of the rail siding. But you also have another, another condition in item number ten. Where you have to be at least five hundred feet away from a, an existing residential property.
Yes, that's correct. So again, that, that was something that we had in there, but what we modified. Uh, we modified it. Um, we want to make sure that to the extent that there are any residential properties. In proximity to these, we want to make sure that there's an appropriate offset separation.
Yes, I like that very much.
I believe that that was part of a prior conversation. I don't know if it was the last meeting, but the one before. That's something that you and, and the board had emphasized that you wanted to make sure was here.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Anybody, any further questions? So Stan, uh, you want to wrap it up or have you wrapped it up?
I just want to share one more thing if I, if I might. Um, one of the things that, uh, that, um. We, we talked about is, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words. Uh, so I went out and I tried to find a picture of a warehouse. Uh, a rail dependent warehouse. Um, and, and if you recall, rail dependent warehouses need a lot of clear space. Uh, underneath its steel structure inside. That's what, that's what creates that extra headroom. Um, and part of it is because of the amount of stacking that occurs. Uh, I tried to find a picture of a, of a, of a warehouse with rail siding. Where the rail actually was covered. Because I know that one of the prospective developers that's looking. In this, in this zone is envisioning bringing the rail spur. Within the building or within what I'll call it a side shed of the building. So this way, as the loading and offloading occurs. It, the, the, the transfer is protected from the weather as well. It also would enable them to handle. Environmentally controlled products, potentially food or refrigerated materials, things like that. But I did find this and this, this shows how the rail cars will run parallel. To the warehouse itself. There are a series of doors that you would envision a tractor trailer might back into. In this particular case, the doors are spaced and located, so it correlates to the individual rail cars. Uh, forklifts can then go into the rail car itself, remove material, bring it into the building. And the rail cars advance. Um, what I, in speaking to, um, one particular builder of warehouses and that's their specialty. Uh, what he, and that's where I got this from. When I said, can you give me one that, that shows the rail access next to it? Uh, he pointed out, he goes, yes, and in fact, I got a great picture of it. Not only does it show the working side, the rail side. Uh, but it, it, it kind of showed the opposite end of it too, the front door, so to speak. Because even though it's a warehouse, there's generally an administrative office associated with it. Uh, these warehouses are oftentimes located in places where. The aesthetics of the operation are important. Um, so I just thought the, the, the view of the rail and the view of, of so to speak, the front door were helpful. Um, and this is a warehouse with extra height, so it kind of puts, puts in perspective. It helps us understand, um, uh, how it looks. And generally, when you have these, uh, these warehouses that are rail served. Generally, it is of a, a more significant magnitude than the warehouses we normally see. Um, I'm not referring to the ones down in Jackson off, off the turnpike. But the general warehouses that are in, 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 uh, in the various towns. So hopefully this helps give some perspective as well. Uh, so Mr. Chairman, that, that's all I've got unless you've got additional questions or comments.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Stan.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, go ahead.
This is Mayor Murphy. I just have one final question for Stan. Uh, under section three. Paragraph D, accessory uses number four, solar energy. For my own edification.
Where are you again, Mayor?
Page, page seven.
Page seven, sorry, I heard three and I jumped to page three.
No, it's section three, paragraph D. Number four. Uh, solar energy, can you define that for me?
I, I can help, uh.
Jerry.
I can help on that, Jerry. We, uh, we already, basically, solar energy, battery storage and fuel cells. Are all being proposed here as accessory, not, not the principal. And that would, that would allow for such things as solar, uh, panels, solar fuel cells. Solar, uh, you know, direct solar to electric, other types of solar, uh. Facilities to be, and the way we allow them in general and battery storage and. And there's some pretty fancy hydrogen fuel cells that are becoming popular. They, they would be something, if you had a principal use like a warehouse or any, or an office building. You could put these equipments on your building or on the land. But not the way it works. You have to put them in the side yard or the, or the rear yard. Because of our accessory structure ordinance. So you, you could ask for a variance to put them in the front yard. But you would, generally speaking, would not be a principle, definitely not a principal use. And the reason Stan and I, you know, Stan and I feel this, this is advisable is that truly. You know, when, when you have buildings that have like. You know, you'd be amazed, you know, like say forty thousand or fifty thousand square feet and you put a solar. Equipment on the roof, it's invisible and yet can be a very significant benefit to the property owner. Great investment, so. Uh, so we think it makes sense and we, we'd hope you'd.
Okay, thank you.
So if the board is ready, Stan, I want to compliment you that those pictures are great and that really does help. It helps me and I think it would help everyone understand. Now, what are we talking about here and? This is your, this is our primary economic development zone with our most significant. Industrial economic development warehouse office, uh, uses allowed these two zones. So it's really great to be talking about this, great planning. And, uh, if the board is ready. But if you're not, fine, but if you're ready, you, you might consider, you know, talk about it, open to the public and then perhaps. What we do is we refer it or recommend it to the township committee, township council. Be consistent with our master plan reexamination report. And often they take under an advisement and if they're ready, when they're ready. They might like stand to come and talk to them about it or whatever, or talk to, to Chris when, when she gets to. Be acquainted with it again. And or Jerry, and then they, they, they decide whether they want to introduce it. If they introduce it, that means they start the legislative process. Then they have to refer it back to you for consistency report, even though it sounds like ping pong, it, it is required. Then you decide whether it's consistent with the master plan. I think it would be consistent with the master plan, but it's certainly not inconsistent with the master plan. And then if they were to adopt it, they adopt it at second reading and then that ordinance becomes law. And that, you did that recently for, I think, an economic development, uh. Plan, commercial economic development zone over there by Route fifteen across the street from North Village. And you've done it in other occasions too. So that's, that's the procedure. It would follow if you are ready and if you would like, you know, after you open to the public, if you'd like to, uh, recommend it to the township council.
Question. Other properties within five hundred feet could get a variance for rail siding also if they wanted, couldn't they?
Yes, if they were, if they were to try to ask for it as a variance, they could do that to the planning board as this is structured. If they, if you did not change this ordinance, this height. Would require a D variance from the zoning board, bringing the entire, so if. If a warehouse came in, even though it's permitted use and even though. It's permitted to be a warehouse and even though it's, it's encouraged to use the rail. If they asked for the fifty feet of height or whatever. Is allowed in this ordinance, but if it was more than ten percent over thirty-five feet, more, more than thirty-eight point five feet. Or thirty-eight point five feet or more. They would need a D variance for the entire case to the, uh, I think I'm right, it might be forty feet, but basically. To go as high as fifty feet would be a D variance to the zoning board. Bringing the whole case to the zoning board, even though it's much like a warehouse that's less high. So. That's one of the reasons why Stan and I think it makes sense to make this change because. We do feel that rail, rail dependent uses. To take best advantage of the rail. Justify some extra height. And, uh, so that's, that's part of the, that, and that would be a good thing because it would mean. They would basically take their, all their site plan work to you as the planning board. And not burden the zoning board with a lot of detail. When it's only the, let's call it the height determining the, the D variance.
And, and Tom, the, the, i- if they should take action tonight, the action isn't binding. Uh, just to, so we're clear, the reason why this. I guess started or is born from the planning board because it's really born from your master plan reexamination report. That's, that's the genesis. Master plan reexamination report. That's that's the genesis. Of of these changes. It would still have to go through. The normal introduction referral back and then second reading, which is a public hearing process. So the vetting process, it just would be more appropriate, given the nature of a land use ordinance. For it to come from the planning board up to the council as opposed to another another form of movement. So it might be a recommendation for the council to consider this as a as a change.
That's that's right, and that is, that has been something that Sparta has been trying to do for years to try to. Get advice from the planning board to the governing body before ordinances like this. Even get started, but this one did have its genesis, its start. In some general language in the reexamination report, and it might have been in multiple reexamination reports. And you have tried to promote rail dependent uses and that's what Stan, there's some interesting ones. You have the. The the sugar and that was an interesting application. That was had. Interesting approval and the man did say he wants to ship sugar. And that would be great to do it by rail. And and you had the. Liquid nitrogen gas, which is fascinating by Lindy, one of the premier. That, you know, bottled gas companies in the world. You know, national multinational corporation with a beautiful site right on the rail. And, you know, they didn't need a warehouse this big, but or this high, but but they. Seem to love the the rail location for transshipment, so. You've you've succeeded and this might further that success.
Well, okay, let me, okay, let let me ask the board. You know, based on the previous discussion, is there anybody here who would be opposed to. Adopting these amendments as proposed tonight. And and essentially recommending to the council that. They adopt them and they become part of the ordinance of the township eventually.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I suggest, let's open to the public first. It's always good to get any input. I don't think there's anybody, but let's just. Let's just do that before you give some deliberations.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I shall close the meeting to the board and open a meeting to the public. I request that if there's anyone from the public who is wish, who is willing to. Who would like to speak to the board, please dial star nine. Or raise your hand and and be recognized, wait until you recognized by the moderator. Of this meeting, and at that point, please state your name and address. And you are going to be sworn in and. Please also indicate. Who do you wish to direct your comments to, whether it's the board? Or whether it's our township engineer. So with those comments. Let's see if there's anybody from the board who is wish, who's. Who would like to speak to us.
The public.
I'm sorry, public. Stand corrected.
Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much. Given that there are no hands raised. I will call, I I will close the meeting to the public and I reopen the meeting to the board. And so, again, the. I guess the the objective at hand is to see if. Would anybody be opposed to adopting these amendments? The way they are currently being presented and written here. And take it to the next step of. Of of recommending adoption to the township council. Okay, so if there's nobody, if there are no objections and the board feels that. They're ready to move and and adopt these amendments, Tom, do we actually formally adopt them?
Not adopt, but you make them, I'll I'll help you with a motion. And it recommends it to the governing body, so. If the board would entertain it, it's a motion to recommend the. Draft ordinance that we've just been discussing as by title, the title I won't read, but everybody knows what it is about the rail dependent uses. With the correction to make sure that the red line removal of the number seven. Is not removed and to just that. Think that was all that you had, then we'll remove the redlining, but we already did, so so we'll. Well, is there a motion to that effect by a board member in a second? And George, it'd be good if it's a different member.
This is Dr. Parker. I'll make that motion.
Thank you. We have a second.
Mr. Chairman, this is, oh, I will second that.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Dr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Dorena?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chairman Cazik?
Yes, thank you. Tom, thank you. Stan, thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's gonna be a great opportunity for our township. I I'm very confident that, you know, in the future, that's, this is very useful. Okay, the next item on the agenda is another draft ordinance that. We have been working on. Mr. Collins has been crafting. Has gone through a couple of iterations already. And you should have received a copy of it. The copy that I have has. Several blue line changes inserted. So what I would like to do possibly is to have Mr. Collins just quickly. Review some of these changes and and then open it for further discussion to the board.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes. You previously talked about echo housing units actually many times over the past months or years. And you've noticed that other municipalities like Lafayette and one of the Amwells have. Such a permission in their zoning ordinances. And you've been reading some literature about the different types of ordinances. And basically, echo housing is is a name that was created called for elder cottage housing opportunity. That is basically a way for a unit of housing for. A relative, an elderly or disabled relative to be brought onto the property. And used for them in conjunction with their family members for their care and housing. And then to be removed when the person is no longer. Either with us or no longer needs that housing. And so. Last time we talked about a sort of, let's call it the Lafayette draft. But also we looked at some information about the Amwell, I think it's West Amwell draft. And they had a, as George pointed out, a very robust website information about their. Echo unit program. And so the the some of their provisions are now in your draft as blue lines. Versions also. Clarifications, one that I think Maureen suggested to us, which makes a lot of sense is. It really won't work on small lots or in small lot zones. So the focus of attention is on the lots zones with acreage greater than one acre. The R one, the R S R, the R C one and the R C two. And a requirement in this ordinance that the lot have at least one acre. I think that makes an awful lot of sense. I. You know, if someone really wanted to do it on a smaller lot, they could go to the zoning board. But even now, anyone could on any lot could go to the zoning board and ask for permission for it. Variance is probably used for us to do this. And they might get that if they had an appropriate lot and they could offer conditions like this ordinance. But this ordinance makes it feasible to just do it. At on a lot of one acre or more, provided you meet the conditions. And they're important conditions. They're, they really are trying to make sure that this is the sole purpose of the housing. Not not a permanent year round occupancy by non elder. Non-disabled persons. You know, it's not a second apartment on a single family lot. It's it's really is an echo housing unit. So that's, that's for your consideration. I would say to you, it they, it isn't used that often. And I think I've explained why. It's still very expensive. And it doesn't get you a permanent investment. So. It but it but to a person with the means and the desire to do it. It is a very useful tool for relative. To help care for a relative on your own property, and that's why people do it. And for those people, it's great.
Just a quick question. I think it 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 makes complete sense. I'm just curious, what's? What's the verification process look like or how do we verify that? I mean, if somebody goes and, you know, they're caring for an elderly. Family member, how how does the town either enforce or or how does that work from? Either an enforcement or a verification perspective?
Yeah, it is. It is a good, great question, Drew, and it is hard. So what the these programs set up is an application process. That requires both the certification of the status, the proof of the status as. The person being. Disabled or needing. You know, being a senior citizen and related. Then an inspection, a proposal with an application for conditional use. To this board, I believe, and then also the basically meet these standards, prove that they meet the standards. And. Get a conditional use permit approval. Provide the all the information. And then there could be an inspection afterwards and inspection later. And I would admit to you that it is, it is always a challenge to enforce occupancy requirements. But the goal of this type of ordinance is to. To try to find ways to make it lawful for the people who like to do things lawfully. And and to not allow it for people who violate it. So if they were to violate it, the the basic principles of enforcement would apply that. That the ordinance violation and the conditional use permit up violation would be a zoning violation punishable. In municipal court or in superior court by fines, I think up to five hundred dollars a day, might even be a thousand. Potentially an injunction to compel them to leave. Certainly a removal before the sale. And. Similar draconian measures, which hopefully don't need to be enforced. And I think, I think because you have fairly strong standards for this. It probably will be enforced, probably people will comply is what is the likelihood. And just so you know, I I I think that's that that's what I was saying. I don't think it's that common to use it. Because you do have to agree to all these things and do some engineering. And some pretty expensive work to prepare your site for and to to buy a unit. And place it on a foundation or footing or tie down that is lawful.
Tom?
Thanks, Tom.
I I have a question.
Hi, Ted.
Okay, my question is, is that the minimum allowed area of one acre. I don't have one acre of property, but I'm on a corner and I feel if I. I could put one in my backyard if I wanted to. My feeling on the one acre is that you're eliminating like like Mohawk. Because most, almost all the houses are on less than an acre, which is a large part of the town. You're eliminating. A very large section of the town.
Yeah, it is. That is true, Ted, and it's not just Lake Mohawk. It's all zones that are less than an acre and it's. That's a lot, that's the, there's some other zones too. So it's a, it is a lot of area that would not be eligible by the, for this pursuant to this ordinance. However, if a person did want to do it, even though they couldn't comply with this ordinance. The variations from it would be variations from a condition of a conditional use and would go to the zoning board, just like. Someone can currently go to the zoning board for this type of use. So. Now, that being said, I want to add something further. It isn't just this ordinance that makes it hard to do it on a lot less than one acre. The the requirements for septic are the modern requirements for septic infrastructures near septic are so. New so significant that it is extremely difficult. To do a echo unit on a lot that has septic. And that is less than an acre. And in part because. The setbacks from the property lines, the setbacks from the main structure and the setbacks from the septic. Are very, very difficult to meet. And corner lots, not, I don't know your lot and I don't want to judge your lot at all. But corner lots are particularly hard because they have two front yards usually. So even though the the owner likes to think of them as as, you know, one front and one side. That zoning treats corner lots as two front yards. So and twenty yards cannot be used for accessory structures at all, so that makes. That so all these things, when they, when they work together. It it make it almost impossible anyway to do it on one acre, less than one acre. And it's so what the, what Maureen pointed out to me, and I agree with this, is that. It's it's kind of bad to let people think that they can do it and go through all this. And when the reality is, it probably won't be feasible to even do the engineering to fit it. On less than an acre lot with a house than septic on it. And so, and which is what this is for. This is for doing it on a lot that has a house and a septic. And, you know, meet all the bulk standards plus this, so. But that being said, if you or anyone else in a lot less than one acre wanted to go for it. You go to the zoning board and do all the details and ask for the relief from the things that are not being met. So it's not, it's not foreclosing that. It doesn't, we can't prevent that anyway. That's available now. The other thing I want to just say is that a lot of times when people have this need. They really don't do this, because as I said before, this is very costly. You have to buy this unit and you can't mortgage this unit usually. It won't be a permanent fixture. It won't be something that improves the value of your house. So what people usually do, sometimes illegally, is they. They convert a section of their house to be more useful. They convert a section of their house to be more useful to their relative with a little separation. That's why I say sometimes illegally. But there are legal ways to have. Uh, another master bedroom in a house where people share the same kitchens and bathrooms. You can have a house with four master, as many master bedrooms as you want to have. And guess what that does? People do that because it enhances the value of their house. It is mortgageable. It is something that can be increased the value and it is something that can be sold for a greater value. At the time of the death of the relative or the, the lack of need for the house anymore. And so. The real world economics encourage making the existing house useful for the relative. And the, this is a creative tool. That I would say is rarely used because of those cost factors and benefit factors. Also, another factor that happens is we never know how long we're going to need. An echo housing unit because a nursing home may be required or death may take place. So. All kind of sad talk, but basically, uh. It's just one more tool. And another tool is this conversion of existing houses. And, and not, another tool is the use variance.
I hadn't thought of the septic system.
It's tough.
Problem.
Um, I have a question, uh, on your page one. I think it's a. On the very bottom.
Okay.
Uh, the first line. Um, the word is AD, but I think that that should be something else. Is that just a typo in there?
Yeah, we're, we're on the first page.
Yeah.
It should be and, right?
I think so.
I just probably, let me just, let me just, oh yeah, it should be and.
Okay. I thought it was a typo.
Thank you.
Hey, any, uh, any other questions or discussions from anybody?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor or Mr. Chairman. It's, uh, Mayor Murphy. Uh, I did have a couple. Tom, it just, for my own edification again, uh. The, the 55 years old, is that something we adopted from somebody else's ordinance or is that some state regulation?
On this subject, it's just the, what is the form in other people's ordinances? It is also a comment that, I'll give it to the, some common elder or. Let's call them age restricted housing numbers are. Interestingly enough, 52, 55, 62 and 65. For zoning purposes. For some reason, echo. Ordinance is typically used the 55. You could use perhaps 52, you could go to 62, you could go to 65. There's no, you're not wedded, you're not. Required to use a particular age here.
All right, um, I'm just going to toss this out to the rest of the board. Uh, I was thinking 62 might be a, a better number. It's more restrictive, yes, but then again. People that, uh, are retiring or this day and age are working at least until 62, most likely 65. And social sec- security kicks in. So I just wanted to have anybody else chime in on that.
Well, let me, let, let me, let me ask you this. The, okay, so we, we have the number, but. If we are dealing with a family member, let's say with under 55 years age. Could, could that family member, if disabled, could, uh, could they be accommodated under this ordinance?
Yeah, it says or older or disabled.
Yeah, it is that you, you could be disabled at which, you know, in general. A person who is disabled under the Social Security Administration definitions. Um, who is, who is a relative or going to be cared for by the family. Uh, would also be eligible for such an echo unit. So they could be, they could be, they could be any age at all. And that might, that's so you know, that might mean like a parent, the parents of a person with a. Wheelchair disability might decide that the best way to. Plan to care for their child was for the rest of their lives to have them live in an echo unit on their house lot. And, uh. Then perhaps even arrange for someone to be their caretaker living in the house after their death. So, so, uh, it could be a long-term housing unit.
Yeah, I did. Is anybody else on the board, uh, have any?
I was gonna say, uh, I, I was gonna say move it to 52. Uh, I don't think the three years is going to make that big a difference. And I think that the spirit of this is. If you have somebody who is, is, um, a relative, cause it had, still has to be a relative. I don't see a different, you know, worrying about three years. Just make it at 52, keep it within the, the realm of, of the system. That'd be my suggestion, whatever. But I'll go along with whatever anybody else says.
All right, well, we got two proposals, one for 52, one for 62.
And a draft, and a draft at 55. Should we hold it at the?
Going once, going twice.
I, I don't care.
Anybody else on the board? I mean, come on, guys, let's, uh. We're having a lottery here.
55 seems to be the state's age.
55 seems reasonable.
Yeah, Mike Sylvester, what do you say?
Mike's eating dinner.
No, I'm here. I'm trying to get this volume off. I got, I'm doing this on my phone because somehow my computer's not working tonight. So. Um, 55.
55 seems to be the opinion. I'll stay with, I'll go with 55. There's no problem.
The same here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, very good.
I have one more, one more question, uh, on page two. Under sub paragraph B, Roman numeral seven. It, it, it says, uh, the last sentence, it shall be located on masonry block or wooden piers. And I would like to add, if anybody's familiar with a sonotube. In lieu of a masonry block. Now, it, it doesn't say the masonry block has to be solid. Or cemented in place. And if you do, you should need a footing underneath it. But a sonotube would accomplish all of that. You could dig a hole just like you would for a wooden pier and then pour it with concrete. It would be ground level. So you wouldn't have to tear it down at the end. You could just leave it in place.
So, so Jerry, with the words. You see how we have, already have wooden piers?
Yeah.
Should we, should we say wooden piers or concrete sonotubes?
Yes, a sonotube is actually a cardboard cylinder of all different diameters that. Are put in the ground and then just poured with concrete.
So actually there, I, I guess I do know what that is. And that's, that's actually probably a concrete pier, isn't it?
Yes, yes, it is.
So if we just say wooden or concrete piers. You know, put in, so it's masonry block. Or.
Comma, wood, wood pier or.
Wooden or concrete piers, right there.
Correct. Yes.
Now, this is the reason, this, this is sort of regulated by the. Uniform construction code. We're just sort of tying it in.
Correct. You know, our, our frost line here is, uh, 42 inches. So. Whatever the billing inspector would require would fit. Like I say, it's not a big deal to dig a, a round hole and put these tube in and fill it with concrete. In fact, it's probably quicker.
And without hitting a rock.
Come on, Doc.
Be optimistic.
There you go. Yeah, I, I just thought that would make.
Okay, any other questions, Mayor?
Uh, yes. On, uh. Paragraph, sub paragraph D. It, where it talks about fees, I think there should be some mention of taxes being current. Before any application can be made.
We run into that. I think we can put it in Jerry, but that's technically. A requirement of all applications for conditionally, for all applications for development. And this one is. You do have to file with the planning board for an application for a conditional use approval. And when you do that, you have to have proof of taxes paid. So, but we could put it in. Certification of tax paid right here as number, letter, Roman numeral five.
Okay. And then the only other question I had was, uh, on the Roman numeral. Uh, four, on page four. It talks about treatment with skirting. Uh, there's no mention of a minimum or maximum height above the ground for the bottom of this. Uh, echo unit. And I'm just wondering, i- is, is that make any sense? I mean, we do have steep slope ordinances. But is that even, uh, opening up a Pandora's box here?
Well. I don't think you want, I don't think you need to do it because you still have a, a structure requirement. So if it's an accessory structure, I believe it's. You know, if it's attached to the house, it's, it's the house itself and that's 35 feet.
Well, these can't be attached.
They, they can't, they're not supposed to be, but there might be a way to have a portico attaching them.
Oh, really? That's all other area then.
Yeah, but. But the. So the answer to the question is we're, they're restricted by the accessory structure height limit, which I think is 16 feet or something like.
It is 16 feet.
So, so you sort of, you know, you're wise not to have too much space. You know, basically put it close to grade because you get stuck with the 16 feet.
Well, then you got the septic requirements too, and you don't want that pipe exposed. So, yeah, you're right. I will leave it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else, uh, questions or comments? Okay, so if, uh, we don't have any, uh, further questions or comments. You know, based on past review of, uh, the draft ordinance. Uh, it was quite clear to me that we did have substantial support by members of the, uh. Members of the planning board. Uh, I think, I think we all kind of agreed that. The, uh, opportunity for people to utilize this, uh, was, uh. Not, not exceedingly widespread, you know, it, it's going to be one C, two Cs, but. Certainly, uh, you know, this would give, uh, additional options to people in the township. Who, uh, may have the need and may have the resources and the finances to. Choose this option and it, it, it can be very, very beneficial. Uh, uh, when it comes to elderly care, especially, uh, you know. People that need help, nursing type help. Uh, the proposition can be very, very expensive and, uh. Literally, you know, uh, for a couple of years, it can run into. Several hundred thousands of dollars in order to, uh, support that in a nursing home. Or through other means. So I, I, I personally am very much in favor of adopting this. And, uh, so again, uh. You know, I like to propose to the board that, uh, we take action tonight, you know, based the, uh. Based on the contents, uh, being incorporated and the corrections made. I, I very much like the fact that we limit this to, uh, 720 square feet. I think, I think the one acre restriction is probably the right thing to do. And, uh, uh, I, I don't think it would be, you know, very beneficial to lots that are very small. Uh, it would also create some issues maybe for neighbors. Uh, putting a trailer behind a small house, uh, you know, and, and unfortunately. Uh, impacting on, on their, their options and their views. So. I think, I think the one acre sounds good to me. Uh. And, uh. So I, I, I propose that, uh, we take steps tonight like we did before to. Take this draft resolution and, uh. Adopt it, uh, you know, recommend it to, uh, to be adopted by the, by the council. We, we can, I can, I can, uh, at this time, before we perhaps discuss that, let me. Let me, uh, close the meeting to the board at this time and open the meeting to the public. Uh, I don't know if anybody from the public may have joined us, uh, previously, uh, or, or in the meantime. There was nobody there before, so.
Let Maureen tell you.
Is there anybody, any indication that anybody?
There are no questions or raised hands, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right. So in that case, I'm going to, uh, close the meeting to the public and reopen the meeting back to the board. And, uh, the board is ready. If the board is ready, you could consider a motion to recommend. The proposed, uh, echo housing ordinance with the changes. Uh, we discussed this, this evening, uh, to the governing body, mayor and council for their consideration and adoption. Is there such a motion?
Uh, so moved, Mayor Murphy.
Dr. Parker, I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Dr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Rena?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Cezanne?
Yes, thank you. Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you, uh, for all the work time that you have done, uh. On this, uh, proposed ordinance, uh, we are grateful. Yes?
You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh. Okay, the, uh, the last item that, uh, I like to spend some time on is back in. I guess the last time we really talked about the master plan review, uh, was back in March. And, uh. We kind of, uh, talked about a roadmap and, uh, I believe that at the meeting. Uh, after that meeting, I came back and I kind of massaged the, uh, prior. Roadmap I had, uh, with the comments that, uh. That has been, that had been provided by the planning board. And so what you see in front of you is reflective, uh. Of what I, 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 I thought to be the latest version of, uh, whatever we have discussed and agreed upon. And attached to the roadmap is, is of course the, uh. Planning board goals that we have been massaging, uh. Back and forth. At, at one time, we, I believe we had something like 19 items. And, uh, but again, uh, prior to, or at the March fourth meeting, we. Called that down to, uh, the current, uh, 12th that, that you see here. And we talked about, uh, if we were to, we were going to make progress, then, you know, we need to, uh. Take it small steps at the time and, and, uh. Since the current master plan has elements in it. That speak to, uh, you know, different things like housing and, and so forth, transportation, uh. So we, we should do it by element by element. So we, we should do it by element by element, you know, limit, limit our discussion to one or two items. And, and I think we pretty much agreed to that. Now, we also try to prioritize, I believe, the, the, the things that we could do something with. And the item that appears here, number one, was felt to be the, 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 the item that perhaps, you know, we could make some progress on. And so what I would like to do really is propose that at least, at least we try to tackle item number one on the, on the goals list by the end of this year. And so the, the issue I, I believe was that we have had applications recently that called to question, you know, how do we deal with, how do we interpret from a regulatory perspective requests where, you know, some, some applicant would like to engage in selling gasoline as well as, you know, perhaps some merchandise? And, and so apparently, the current regulation that we have is, does not cover such an eventuality. So, so again, we, you know, looking, looking at this, there, there, there were a number of variants. We can have a gas station that also provides maintenance service along with the gas station and only maintenance service. We can have a garage that only provides maintenance, no gas station. We can have, you know, w-we, we can have just a fuel dispensary station. And then lastly, you know, we can have, we can have a, a station that, like, by the current gas stations we have on Sparta Ave, okay, that they're also dispense some goods that you, that you can buy along with gas. So when I looked at this, there were four different variants that we could look at. And so the question is, do, do we need to update our definitions to perhaps, you know, recognize that, that the, the service aspect of pertaining to automotive service or pertaining to an automotive service station, the, the service aspect may not be present in every case. And lack of that, is that sufficient justification to interpret the, the application as purely a sales endeavor? And, and so I would like to just, you know, kind of discuss it. What, what are your feelings and perspectives on this?
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom. I have to help you a little bit. This is not just definitions, and if, it, this may be a master plan. I don't think we can do this before the end of the year because this requires a master plan amendment of the town center zones, particularly the town center commercial zone, to even allow new petroleum service, or petroleum sales facility say, the uses. Because they're not, all they're, they're not allowed in that zone except for existing facilities that are being modernized per, per the conditionally used standards as a conditionally used. So I know, which maybe you're, it might be a viable idea to try to do it before the end of the year. It's not feasible because it really should be done with the assistance of our planner, Catherine Samad, Mike Mastrata, and, you know, let's call it, probably should be a look at the town center zones in general for the master plan provisions about, about the town center zones and uses. And it's not really that much of a problem in definitions. Quite frankly, I don't really think there is a definitional problem other than you can, basically you can have a, you can have a convenience store in any property in the town center zone. And you can have a convenience store with a gas distribution if you have, already have it as a, as a conforming, pre-existing non-conforming use. And you can modify them if you meet the standards of the conditionally used. So I don't, although, although some people may, it is good to modernize the definitions. That's not the problem. If, that, I don't think, so. I think that the problem may be something of where would you like them to be? And, and how do you want to allow them? And if so, where? That's, that's really is a master plan amendment.
Tom, actually, just to go back to the definition, we had an application in the C-one zone. And we still have to define, you know, the gas retail and convenience store. Is it two uses? Is it one use?
It doesn't really matter. I mean, I'm willing to look into the subject and that. So that means it's the C-one zone as well. And that might be a master plan amendment as well. But the point is that both of those zones allow convenience stores. So it's not the definition that's the issue. And you can have more than one use on the same property even, I think. If that's a problem, then that's something to recommend in the master plan as well, to have more than one use on the same property. I think what you're struggling with, and which is not the worst problem to have, is that the existing ones that would like to change or be made bigger, they do have to get a deviation from the conditions of the conditionally used. And I believe two out of five of them, or two out of four of them, no, it's actually three out of five, have gone to the zoning board for the quick check, the wah-wah, no, quick check, Shell Station, Seven-Eleven, and Gulf Convenience Store. And then maybe there's another one--
At the top of Mohawk Avenue.
Right, those three were proved as D-variances, but D-variances solely because they deviated from the conditions of the conditionally used that allows pre-existing non-conforming gasoline service stations to be modified if they meet the conditions, and they couldn't meet the conditions. So, but the condition, but then the zoning board approved them with requirements, and, and they seem to have worked. So it's not the biggest problem to ask for it to be, to have a convenience store instead of your garage. I, I don't, I don't think that's the problem at all, actually. So if there's, if there's a desire to, to have change here, it's probably a master plan amendment to allow the use to be other places besides the pre-existing non-conforming ones. That, that were made, that were saved, they're saved by the ordinance. We've talked, it is complicated, and we've talked about this before. But the existing ordinance does, in, in this TCC and probably in the C-one, allows conditionally use of, of the use. But we, but I, the only point I'm trying to make right now is, it seems easy, but it's a master plan amendment which takes time and probably ought to be gathered together with the planner and any other master plan amendments you would like to make in the town center zones or anywhere in the township. It's a, we're, we're in the, that's what this process is. We're doing a master plan review, and we're thinking about trying to amend the master plan. And so we need, that's, that's a good item to have as number one. But it, but it is a master plan amendment, and we, it's gonna take time, and we need some professional assistance from our planner. And we have acce, we do have access to our planner, Catherine Samad, for that type of work.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what is your goal in this? Do you want to wean this down from twelve to three? I mean, I, I could, I could say one, two, and three. If we can, if the planning board just concentrates in those three areas, that's enough. The rest we're either doing, or it's under the purview of the council. And at nine, ten, eleven, we do, as a matter of fact, when we hear applications before the planning board. You know, twelve is something, I don't, I don't know how that would impact our tax structure with a historic neighborhood, whether or not they get breaks, or whether they get some kind of a, you know, variance not to, well, I don't even know how that would, a historic zone.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 I agree with you. We, we have, yeah, yeah, that, that would, yeah, that, 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 that definitely represents, you know, certain issues. And, and certainly, that, you know, i-it is something that, that Lake, the Lake Mohawk Country Club attorney came to us with to request to revert back to the old zoning that they had. And I don't know what was the instigation necessarily, but if, if you look at the, I think, I think I took the time, one time, to look at the, the current zoning district requirements vis a vis the One H Community Commercial Starting Zone District. And one of the issues that came to light was that, from an architectural perspective, apparently, the Lake Mohawk Club has some deed, deed restriction rights in terms of the architectural options. And I thought that that could override, essentially, de facto, that could, that, that could kill an application if they so true, i-if they did, if they deemed that it, it wasn't consistent in their mind with the architecture of the neighborhood. So, so that was, you know, one, one of the compelling issues. I think, I think there's also the, the right to have an apartment complex. I think as far as, I wonder what uses would that be allowed? So there, there, there definitely is. The, the only reason I think item twelve appeared here was because Lake Mohawk Attorney has actually came to the board and requested that we consider rezoning to go back. And justification wasn't quite given. But I, I don't see that a high priority item from my perspective. I think if we, you know, can limit and, and achieve one, two, three, that would be an accomplishment. So, you know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not in disagreement with you. Reason the list exists is that, you know, make, make sure that everybody's aware that we had a list. And, and there are still outstanding items that we agreed to work on. And whatever we can do this year, we should. If we cannot, you know, do item one, I, I thought that perhaps, you know, we could. But I didn't quite appreciate all of the challenges that Tom has described. I, I, I do appreciate the fact that there, there are, there are probably a number of issues, including, you know, how many gas stations do we want to have in a town center? Whether the current number is sufficient to meet our needs? And along with some definitional, definition issues. But I, I, I can see where, you know, we could probably need planning help, professional planning help in order to advance item number one.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to tighten up definitions. I'm not sure what carbon-based fuel products are. Electric charging stations is a separate entity from any of the other ones that dispense petroleum-based product. So, you know, number four, that's really kind of out of our hands. We've got a new player in town now, Altis, who bought Service Electric Cable. And there'll be changes there. But again, the council's working directly with them. And I sit on a committee that has interviewed their regional manager. We presented our objections to signing a ten-year contract with Service Electric. So that's already in the works. The council's addressing number five. The council's addressing number seven. I don't know that we need to get into number eight because our recreation department is, does most of the planning on it. And we've got two facilities that aren't fully utilized, so. Again, I, I just think the first three, and like Tom said, number one is gonna take time. That might be a long-range goal, and the other ones, you could make short-range goals.
Okay. Okay, so any, any other comments about the list?
I, I do have one, George. This is Tom. You're, you're currently filed with the Office of Planning Advocacy for what is called state plan endorsement. And it segues fairly well with where you are with this, with your master plan work and the very great work done by the subcommittees, the two subcommittees, and the, the survey work done to do outreach to all of the members of the public about what are the, some of the interests that people have and uses in the township. And so as part of that plan endorsement process, the state planning office is still working with us, and they would like, if we can get that, that would mean that your plan would be endorsed and your town center, which has existed since at least, well, existed actually for decades, for a long time. But it's been recognized by the state of New Jersey since two thousand and six as the statewide township, town center, the Sparta Center. That would be continued by the state if you get plan endorsement. And it has been continued by administrative actions of the state. So we probably will want to keep working with this board and with the manager and the planner and Stanley Push, and perhaps with the Economic Development Commission Committee as our, as one of our outreach groups to show the state that we have been doing good planning for many years and are continuing to do it. And we do outreach through the things like the, the, the survey. And to ask for any approvals needed from the State Planning Commission staff, the Office of Planning Advocacy, to let us keep proceeding for that endorsement. So I'd like to put in here, I don't really, I think Jerry's right, a lot of these houses, these elements, we don't really need to amend. And it really don't need to amend a redevelopment plan element. That's sort of a different type of subject, actually. So maybe I'll work with you, George, and with, to, to, to reshape this a little bit. Maybe I'll, if you can send me this by, it probably have it by Word document, but I could, I could use the basis. And then I could shape it to work with our requirements for the Office of Planning Advocacy that I'm working with Maureen and with the manager and Stan about. And I think I've talked about to, to you guys, to the, I, I know I've talked to, to in general about it with you, but now we, we're getting into the meat of it. And they, they do have a lot of these technical rules. One, and it's, so-- One, and it's, so we, we basically have to do certain tasks, but one of the tasks that's kind of, kind of easy and might be really good to do is something we already do without a formal resolution, which is called, uh, Safe Streets. And it's just a DOT program to try to encourage safe streets and safe sidewalks and safe bike lanes and safe, uh, walkways. And we follow, we do the things that, that that encourages, uh, but the state would like to see towns and state DOT would like to see towns formally adopted. So it's something we could, we could actually do pretty quickly and recommend to the governing body for them to adopt. And it would be, uh, a checkmark for the Office of Planning Advocacy for doing something the DOT likes, which I think, frankly, you already do, but it would, it would be this checkmark. So let me, let me work on that a little bit and maybe I can narrow this down a little bit. We, some of these things don't require a whole element and they don't necessarily even require, uh, you know, a full expensive, uh, master plan amendment. So, uh, I'll, I'll work on that and I'll, I'll tailor in this stuff about the state plan and Office of Planning Advocacy. Our planner is a man named Matt Blake and he's very cooperative with us. And he's trying to help us find ways to, uh, move along this path of plan endorsement. And the state planning office, they recognize that it's a COVID emergency and they're trying to make it things easier for towns to, to do this. So, um, we're going to try to take advantage of all those accommodations that they offer. So that being said, I think we, we can narrow that down and, but if, but if people on the board want to give us any ideas to flesh these things out or to, to make sure we incorporate into the list, uh, you can do it tonight or you can maybe just email me, uh, a comment, uh, not to the whole group, but just one at a time to me and Maureen, maybe. But you've made great progress. Your housing element is in really good shape. You, uh, you, you've been consistent in your planning and, uh, some really, really great, uh, stuff that you've accomplished.
Okay, Tom, so I will, I will provide this to you, uh, and, and I will follow up with you on it, uh, just, just as you recommend, uh. And we're gonna, we're gonna call the list down. Uh, I think, uh, I think Jerry is, uh, making very good comments with regard to one, two, three, four, five, seven. I, I, I agree that eight should be deleted, uh. So, so, you know, we've been, we've been struggling with this, uh, I, I have to say. But, uh, but I think I, you know, uh, I think that, uh, you know, progress regarding the master plan is, uh, you know, somewhat, uh, difficult. And, uh, it, uh, it, 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 it does take, uh, you know, people's time to, uh, go back and look at what exists and, um, you know, make a decision what's missing and, uh, you know, unfortunately, that's very, very time-consuming. And, uh, I'm sure that all the board members are very busy, so, you know, planning resources would help. And Tom, any direction you can give definitely would be welcome, as always, like, like you indicated. So, okay, so let's, uh, let's leave it at that, that we, we will have, we will continue to have a, a list that we are going to keep alive and update and pass along and and then from time to time, you know, we're gonna, uh, as time permits, uh, we're gonna go back to it and see if we can make some progress with the list. Uh, I think the two ordinances that, the, the draft ordinances that we have covered tonight uh, have been a tremendous accomplishment. Uh, again, you know, thanks, uh, thank you for, uh, everybody's help and your participation. And, uh, I think the town is going to benefit, uh, as a result of it. And, uh, uh, things are going to be, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, uh, more choice is going to be given to, uh, to our residents than perhaps, uh, what exists today. So with that, any, any, anybody has any further comments that you would like to make, uh, before we close the meeting? Before we adjourn the meeting? Okay, if not, then let me make a, anybody cares to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
I'm moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you so much.